All right, good evening. It's 5:30. It's time to start the meeting. Would you please stand up as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a nice crowd here today. Thank you for getting out and being here today. And we're going to get started with the meeting. Okay, gentlemen, Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Keflis, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any questions or amendments to that?
I'd like to move Item D and Consent Agenda to Items for Commission Action.
D as in dog?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's the only change you have, Commissioner Keflis?
Correct.
Commissioner Hayes, how about you?
I have no amendments.
Do I have a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second the motion.
All in figure, all in agreement, say aye.
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 Motion carries, three to zero. All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the items on the Consent Agenda? Are there anything other than Item D, which we've removed for Commission Action? Anything, any questions concerning any of those items?
I have none.
I have no others either.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda as modified.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carried.
Mayor, would you like to go to the item on, that was taken off the Consent Agenda?
Okay, let's, let's do that. Let's, we're looking at Item D, which was consider authorizing Indy Brew Works to utilize the right-of-way on the east side of Eighth Street on February 13th, March 20th, April 17th, and May 22nd.
This is not an objection to the use of the right-of-way, but in the past, each event that was set up, the vendors were confused, and when they set up, they had to reset up. They blocked the street, set up on the wrong side of the street, and it seems like the communication is an issue that we could simplify maybe if we would establish a right-of-way use permit that would address the, the use then. In this case, Indy Brew Works could give the permit then to their vendor. Their vendor would have a guideline to follow and maybe cut down staff's time to go down and, and address the issue to get it corrected for traffic flow and other things. And also, it could note some of the special requirements. It's kind of a unique situation with the, the, Indy Brew Works is an alcoholic beverage establishment, but with use of the right-of-way, we do have a, a problem with consumption of alcohol on public right-of-way outside, so it could serve as a reminder for the vendors what our ordinance is to avoid other problems. We, we did have a request last summer for extending the consumption of alcohol into the street for an event, and we denied that, so this would provide some consistency and direction, and I think it'd make a smoother transition that, that Indy Brew Works wouldn't have to be concerned with making sure that everything was set up according to what we've agreed to, that they could just mail the, the food truck to the vendors that are going to come ahead of time with the permit, and it would allow us to make sure everything would be in order prior to it. So I know the eighth, is the first one was February 13th, which would be a little rushed to try and get a permit set up or some criteria for that, but the next one on March 20th would be able to have something in order just to make the transition smoother, so I put that out for discussion with commissioners or staff.
Commissioner Hayes?
Obviously, I'm just hearing about this this moment, and we don't have a sample of the document in front of us to analyze, but if we could, if we could get a sample of this procedural, procedural sample and documentation sample of this to put before the commission, we should take a look at it.
We'll ask the city attorney to prepare that.
Right, and that was my, my idea, didn't come through, but just have something so we could review and
Okay.
Make sure the details are worked out.
So that would make it a standardized process, so everyone would adhere to the same regulations, and they would be given that information prior, so that way, there wouldn't be any problem with logistics or setting up these, these vendors.
Are you guys interested in a fee or anything like that, or just?
Not a, not really a fee.
Just a process?
Right.
Okay.
And I noticed the events that we have at the park with the Oval, that they usually have a diagram of where they're going to, if it's a run, set up, and just lets us communicate with everyone
Yep.
Involved. That's kind of where I got the idea after.
Yeah, Kelly and I will work with Jeff to get you something for the next meeting.
Yeah, great, okay. Well, that was all that, that I had, since it was on the agenda, I thought it was a good time to bring this up for discussion, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. It seems like a simple process that we can get developed and standardized, so thank you for bringing that up, and thank you for your input, Commissioner Hayes, also. Chief Harrison?
So, I will make a motion.
Okay.
I move to authorize the Indy Brew Works to utilize the right-of-way on the east side of Eighth Street on February 13th, March 20th, April 17th, and May 22nd.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving forward, we are looking at items for Commission Action. Item A is consider authorizing staff to set the date to receive bids for removal of 201 East Main Street. David?
Mayor, we had a structural engineer here this past week who looked at the structure, and we are waiting for his report, but he did confirm what the other architects in town had said, that the building is in danger of collapse, and that we should prudently move, we should move fairly quickly to get this down on the ground. Therefore, after visiting with Kelly, we thought it was important to get your guys' permission, as soon as we can get the documentation together, to go out for bid, that we be able to do that, so that we can get this dangerous situation taken care of. So that's, we're asking for permission to be able to go out and receive bids for the demolition of 201 East Main Street.
I do have one question, David. This goes back probably a couple of years, when there was initial damage to that building. That far east wall is a supporting wall to everything that goes east, is that correct?
Far east, the party wall?
Yes.
It's actually, and Leonard may be able to, it's actually two walls, the 201 East Main and then the other building, there's actually two walls there.
Okay.
And there's no supporting structure on that wall, so he has given us, he will be giving us detailed descriptions of how to bring the building down, but of all possible scenarios, we have the best possible scenario for that party wall and the cheapest route to get the building down. So, we'll be able to bring it down, and his instructions are going to be, take that wall down hand by hand, but we should be fairly safe to get the structure down and not bother the other buildings.
Good. Okay, that was my question. I knew there had been some concern in the past from previous damage on that building, so I just want to make sure that, that I understood how the process was going to proceed, so.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions for David?
Jeff, did you have something to say?
Yes, Dave, Jeff.
I'm glad you brought up about the party wall. There are some liability issues on that. I've had to research that before for the city, but if we, if it is a party wall, shared party wall, we are required to give the adjacent owner notice, so he can, he or she could take the necessary steps to protect the integrity of the wall once our building's down.
Yeah, it's two walls, so
Okay.
Maybe Leonard could, but it's two separate walls that are just butted together.
Sounded like the buildings were built at different times, and they just put another wall next to the existing wall, so there is a separation, one wouldn't affect the other building.
Yep. All right, good, that's, that's good to know. All right, any other questions, Commissioners?
I think we need to proceed.
All right.
I had a citizen call with questions on when it's removed. They were concerned if the floor slab and the footing foundations were going to be removed as part of the project.
Typically, when we do a demo, we remove everything, all footings, slabs, and the sidewalks would stay if possible, but everything else inside, right, Kelly?
Yeah, it's back to grass.
Back to dirt, and we remove everything.
Since the building originally was a auto dealership, and is there any way to know, or should KDHE and EPA be contacted on how to proceed if there are, or at some point, should there be testing for tanks, underground storage tanks that might still be remaining?
Potentially, once it's down, that would be, I think, due to the danger now, they would let us remove it, but I, we probably should reach out to them and inform them what the situation is and how they would like us to proceed.
And generally, you need the owner's permission, I think, to do the Phase One and Phase Two environmental, don't you, Jeff?
Yes, normal, normally.
It seemed like originally, there was a drive-through on the northwest corner.
That corner, yeah.
And that's where the, the tanks would have been located, out in that area somewhere.
I think our engineer has some experience with dealing with that, so I'll work with John, and we will start researching that as we're waiting to get back with the structural reports, and see if we can get some answers for that, and have Kelly update you guys on what we find out.
Then, you mentioned the sidewalks would remain. Are we looking at a, a project that would include some portion of replacement? The sidewalks are in pretty poor condition, so.
Definitely could be part of the scope, if you, if we, we have to look at the costs and.
Look at putting it in the capital
Yep.
Improvement plan, okay. I think that answers the questions that they had called about their concerns, so I have no further questions, Mayor.
All right, then do I have a motion?
I move to authorize city staff to set the date to receive bids for removal of 201 East Main Street.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, we're going to back up here a little bit, and we have a presentation tonight. Chief Harrison, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm presenting to you Officer Bowers for a meritorious award. On October 3rd of 2020, at 12:18 a.m., Officer Bowers recognized a wanted person during the arrest. The man resisted, and a passing citizen stopped to help. Bowers declined the help, but had the presence of mind to request the person remain as a witness. I think it's pretty remarkable, because I've been in that situation before, and I don't think I ever thought to say, hey, can you stick around and be a witness for me? So that, that was pretty clever, and demonstrates the level of calm that, that he operates under in a high-stress situation. Once restrained, the man continued to resist and refused to follow instructions. He exercised patience and demonstrated exceptional professionalism through the contact. So this award is presented to Officer Daniel Bowers for exhibiting superior professionalism during a difficult confrontation, and he was nominated for this by his supervisor, Sergeant Dustin Stafford, or Dustin Taylor, rather.
Thank you, Officer Bowers. You've, you've been presented awards previously here, and that speaks to your expertise and the pride that you take in the profession that you've chosen. The city is very grateful to have you on the force. We're glad that we're able to present you this award tonight, and we wish you safe journey as you continue to provide services for the city of Independence. Thank you very much for your service, sir.
Thank you, Officer.
All right, moving to items for Commission Action, we are looking at Item Number B, Consider Recommendation from the Planning Commission Regarding a Request to Rezone a Tract of Land from R1 Large Lot Single Family Dwelling District to C1 Neighborhood Business District at 2313 North Pennsylvania Avenue.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On January 5th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this rezoning request. At that meeting, the applicant asked that the hearing be adjourned, adjourned to the next month. There was a motion to do that, but it died for a lack of a second. There were several people in attendance, this actually is a picture from that meeting. And after hearing from the, the individuals, the Planning Commission voted five to two to recommend that the zoning be denied. We have also received some calls in the office. We've, the last few days, we received nine that were in favor of the rezoning, 30 that were against the rezoning. I worked with Jeff and provided you with some possible motions, depending on what action you would like to take on this, and I believe you also have some people here that would like to speak on this. The important thing on these motions is you need, is when, whatever motion you make, unless it's to return it to the Planning Commission, it needs to state the basis for that, and I have the criteria, the different things that can be utilized in that motion for your basis either way, that you, if you approve or deny it. And you don't have to use all of them, just whichever ones you think are applicable. So I wanted to point that out as well.
All right, I do have, I have six people that, that have filled out a request to address the city commission. And that would be the procedure we would follow at this time, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. The first one that has filled out a request is Linda Hernandez. If you would like to come up to the podium, to the microphone here, and we have a, we have a time limit of three minutes, but if you could keep this, because there's several people that want to speak.
I'm not, I'm not a speaker, so I'll probably really mess up, but I just want you to know, I'm here to protest you changing, the commission's to consider changing our residential area to commercial. We have, our street is one block long, it's between Eighth and Penn. That street is used by mothers and dads riding bicycles, pushing strollers to access the cemetery to walk there safely, to the park. That's what it's basically used for. If that is changed, we will have lots of traffic, and that isn't set up for lots of traffic. Also, we have a problem with water. It comes from the fitness building and from social security. That field off of Eighth Street gets filled every time we have a hard rain. Any of you can drive down there and see that. And this will just add additional runoff and have more problems on Eighth Street. And that's all I want to let you know, that I am totally against rezoning our residential area into commercial. There's a lot of prob, a lot of places that are already zoned for commercial, they can go there, and they seem to build buildings, stay two or three years, and jump around an awful lot, and then they'll be empty, we'll have another big empty building there. So I just want you to consider that, and don't let it be rezoned. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Kurt Seiler. How are you this evening, sir?
I'm good, thank you. My name is Kurt Seiler. My family and I live at 300 Crestview Drive. My wife and I have three small children. We were recently notified that the city was meeting to reconsider zoning the lot, a north pen from residential to commercial, for the purpose of a Dollar General store to be built on that lot. My family and I lived in Niobuchay for seven years, one block from the Dollar General located there. I can personally relate to the negative impact a Dollar General store can bring on a neighborhood. I was picking up trash on a daily basis that would blow in my yard from the Dollar General store. There was increased foot and car traffic traveling to the store, putting my kids in danger while playing outside. When we moved to Independence, we specifically looked for a house that was in a neighborhood away from commercial buildings to ensure our children can play outside with us worrying about who was walking by, or how fast a vehicle would be traveling by to get to a store nearby. We found just that at our current location, and now our current quiet neighborhood is trying to be taken away from us once again. There's no need for a Dollar General at the north end of town. Before I moved to Independence, I can always remember driving in on the north end of town and thinking how beautiful of a town this is, and how, and our magnificent cemetery that shows the deep history of this town and all the wonderful people that have lived here over the years. Now the impression visitors will get when they drive into Independence is a Dollar General and all the trash that will be spread out for two to three blocks in every direction. I personally think we need to try to keep neighborhoods just that and keep commercial buildings in already commercially zoned locations. If we put stores all over town and take away the allure of quiet neighborhoods, it will be difficult for future families like mine to find a place to live in town. We already have one Dollar General in town. If we build another one, we will be taking away even more business away from G&amp;W, a locally owned store that helps out our community in a positive manner. I urge every one of you here tonight to really think, would you want a Dollar General next door to you where parking lot lights are on all hours of the night, increased traffic going in and out, semi trucks in and out delivering goods, and increased trash all over the neighborhood? The cons insommarably outweigh the pros. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope for the betterment of our beautiful town. You decide to keep this a residential lot. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, I've been told, please do not, do not clap. All right, just if you nod your head in, in agreement, whatever, but refrain from that, thank you. Next on the list, I have Stacy Boyer. Is Stacy here?
I am. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a letter. From, 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 And Betty basically said, you know, I've given some of these people rides. She's in her eighties, you know, she's giving them rides to town and back out to the little hotel on the north end of town. And that foot traffic is absolutely going to increase. So, you know, my concern isn't just for me, but for my neighbors, you know? The increased foot traffic, the increased trash that's going to come into the neighborhoods, I just absolutely want this to remain a residential neighborhood. Okay?
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen and mayor. I rise with few concerns of my own. I live north of town, out in the country, about two miles. And I have great concern for my hometown. My family's been here for several generations. And I'm looking at the city and these times, these economic times are not the greatest. I think we need to encourage development in our community for the economic well-being of everybody. This is a part of town where there are fewer commercial entities and that's fine, but it's, to the west is the school and to the north is the beautiful country club. Now, I hope that these gentlemen over here have taken into consideration, they need to be to build a building which both takes into the aesthetics of our community, does not endanger that high, high affluent area or these homes, like putting in some lighting that has direct focus lighting instead of so much big lighting. I'd like to see a building built with some aesthetic qualities like masonry work and I hope the planning commission will hold their feet to the fire and will contend with these drainage, drainage type issues so that the whole area is improved by a commercial entity there, if that's what you choose to do. The school district, if you have a child, you've got to drive all the way to Walmart and all the way to somewhere downtown to get those school supplies that they could just practically walk to. And I know the people in the more affluent districts say, well, we'd never shop at that store with those cheaper imports. But as much as I don't necessarily like Chinese imports in my country, I've talked to some of their housekeepers and they tell me Dollar General sells some of the best cleaning products at the most reasonable prices. So to say they would never use tho- that area is kind of incorrect. They would use that too. I also think you should think about the fact that this is not too far from that intersection at Taylor where traffic breaks up or turns into the country club district. So perhaps the driveway at a Dollar General or any commercial entity there should have a little bit wider, more applicable entrance than just being a single driveway that would block traffic as people are fanning out to come into town. When I've traveled across country, like I go to Topeka and I see the Dollar Generals, if I'm coming home at late in the evening, there's a nice little yellow glowing light. And so I think it could be enhance the community and I certainly understand the people who live nearby, their concerns, but I think it would overall be a benefit.
All right, all right. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have Kathleen Reynolds. Yes, good evening. Yes.
Mayor, commissioners and committees here. My name is Kathleen Reynolds. My husband and I live at 729 North 11. Our interest in this meeting is the rezoning of 2313 North Penn Avenue to R1 Large Lot Signal, Si- Single Family Dwelling District to the C1 Neighborhood Business District. Richard's folks, Joe and Gladys Reynolds, bought this two and a half acres in 1949. At that time, they even had livestock out there. They raised their four children. In the early seventies, their daughter Loretta McDermott and husband was given a section of the property on the west side facing Eighth Street, right back behind the home there, they, the Reynolds home, and they built their home there. She still lives there. Loretta and her fiancee, Dave Shatney, have maintained their land plus the Reynolds property since 1989, when their father passed away. Gladys, our mother, passed away in 2001. The house has pretty well been empty since that time. The family's had a few interests to buy, none worked out, renters in and out, more repairs, rent to own, more repairs. The family has exalted most of the estate money that's been left maintaining this property. And we are getting older and it's hard to keep up with a lot of that maintenance. So, family says we need to sell that property. Dollar General approached our family in 2019 and again in 2020 and made an offer to buy the house and some of the land. North area of Independence is an underserved area. Comments have been made to me about the Dollar General positive. It'd be nice not to have to drive clear out to west of town or downtown to purchase items needed. I shop at Walmart, I shop at G and W, and I shop at the Dollar General on East Main. I buy products, there are Rubbermaid plasticware, groceries, clothes. Most items are brain names, brand names, prices are generally lower. For example, Van Capp's Pork and Beans, fifteen ounce, eighty-five cents. You buy it at the other stores, it's a dollar. Now fifteen cents doesn't sound like much, but for families who are on the fixed income and on social security, that all adds up. Many residents living in the north end of town expressed their feelings to the city offices and signed petitions. Many are in favor of rezoning and building a Dollar General. Several own homeowners, even in that 200 block radius, 200 feet radius, I'm sorry, boundaries, said yes to the rezoning. And those were sent in to representatives and into the city. Some issues of concern from the residents from our last meeting, lighting.
Okay, can you finish a couple of statements, please?
Okay, well, the lighting is not bright. We live on 11th, we have front yard over here, we have silo lights coming in for me, that's security and protection. The water drainage problem is, is a problem, is an issue. For example, in our front, our house, we have, when it rains severely, the water comes up to the bumpers of the cars. There is a drainage problem all over Independence, Kansas, but it can be resolved. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then last, I have David Shatney. I hope I pronounced that name right. Okay, I'm going to try to limit this to three minutes, if you could summarize what you want to, what you want to say tonight.
Well, I'm not a professional speaker either.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll do what I can here. I live adjoining to the property. I probably have the biggest piece of adjoining land on that property, probably 200 foot or so. And I'm in favor of the general dollar going in. This big water problem that we have, it comes down through my yard. It doesn't go over there on Bermuda. That's a half a block away and, and that's going uphill. And in fact, there's drains in Bermuda that go underground and come over to my property and come out in an open pipe. And this light problem we have, the house to the north, there's a big field between them and the Dollar General would be. So it's not like they're going to be under the spotlight. And I think we need the additional sales tax revenue and the, and to show the community that the town is willing to expand and try to promote more business. And that's about it.
All right, sir. Thank you very much for your comments. All right, gentlemen, the developer, Mr. Mantle is here. Do you have any questions for him at this time? Commissioner Pliss, Commissioner Rice?
Do you have any statements of your own, sir?
My name's Mike Mantle. I'm with the developer, Reep Helmer Group. We are a preferred developer for Dollar General. We do approximately 30 stores a year for them, have been doing it for the last eight years. So we've, we've developed close to 200 stores for Dollar General. A lot of the, a lot of the comments that you've heard, both for and against, are, are things that we normally hear at, at meetings like this. I've brought my civil engineer that we can talk about lighting and drainage and parking and traffic and, and attempt to answer and pacify as many of those, as many of those questions as we can to the satisfaction of the, of the city. We did search up and down that corridor. It is, Highway 75 is a highway corridor. You've got a little bit of some unique challenges up and down that corridor in terms of depth that, that we can typically fit on. And the lot, that, that particular lot gives us the depth. We would have some utility relocates that we would have to perform to make the store fit there. We're excited about the opportunity. We've, we've dealt with the family. I think it's a, I think it's a good use for a, a piece of property in that, in that corridor. You'll have sales tax generation as well as ad valorem tax, just by kind of way of example, the properties currently, sales taxes, or excuse me, the property tax associated with it is about $943 a year. If we're allowed to change the zoning and build the building that we're discussing here, the property tax will go up to somewhere in the neighborhood of $21,000 to $24,000 on an annual basis. We'll provide jobs. I'll let Alan, my engineer, talk about some more of the kind of technical issues, but we're excited about the opportunity. We'll work hard like we do on every one of these projects to make sure that we thread the needle and hit all the requirements and standards that you have, both from a building permit and a, and a, and a planning and zoning perspective. We appreciate your time and I look forward to trying to work with you here.
Mr. Mantle, thank you. Alan Howar, are you this evening? Identify yourself, please.
Yes, sir. My name's Alan Betts and I'm with AAB Engineering. We're the engineers and surveyors on this tract. Mike was correct in that these are a lot of the same, similar concerns that we have on any time that we come in and do any kind of an infill development. The challenges that you have whenever you develop tracks is, as, as time goes on and communities expand, the tracks that are available for development are usually surrounded by existing development. And, and what comes with that is all the issues that have developed over time of drainage or traffic or access and things that have compounded and maybe not been addressed properly in the past. This particular tract has a pretty substantial drainage feature that comes from north of the tract, going to the southwest corner. And the site that you see up now is actually laid out to avoid that drainage feature and allow it to continue in the same pattern. The onsite development will detain its runoff so that while we have an increase in impervious area, we detain the rate at which it discharges so that it's less than or equal to what it was prior to development. So you're not seeing any peak flow increases downstream, which mitigate those effects. Secondly, the, the large green space on the back allows us to build a detention facility on the rear side of that tract, which we could do everything we can to oversize to help mitigate the impacts, the existing drainage issues that are already happening downstream. We have more area than you normally have and so I would be fairly confident that we can fit that in, in that location. All of the lighting on our sites are dark sky compliant and what that means is it's a zero light bleed philosophy at the, at the perimeters because one of the things that consistently comes up is I don't want the lights from the neighborhood parking lot shining in my backyard or glaring in my window at night. And the way that that happens is it becomes shielded and down oriented instead of just being an up light that's cast out across the parking lot as a whole. What that means is you don't have that just general light bleed and glare and, and we'd be happy to provide a photometric, a photometric plan that shows that, those light bleeds and demonstrate that we aren't having them onto the adjoining properties. We're proposing a full masonry building with a steel structure under, internally, but the external wrap of it is masonry. So it would be a combination of brick, wainscot, and then stucco or ephesus above it so that you get some architectural variation so it doesn't look like, kind of like jail cell wall if we did all, all brick, so you get some features. That gives you a, a more, a more durable building, one that's maintained and looks higher quality for a longer period of time. It also keeps it from just being a standing seam metal building that was propped up, which is an, a, a detraction, I would say, from, in a neighborhood setting. We're also proposing a pretty extensive fence and land, fencing along the entire south boundary as well as screening trees in an effort to continue to mitigate that impact on the adjoining properties. Immediately north of us is the church property wrap is actually separating this parcel from the next residential to the north. So the, the cellar is to the west and then the properties to the south are the ones that really, that, that in my opinion, from, from development are the ones that really see that could argue the most significant impact from having a commercial user next to them. And that's why we were really trying to be super conscientious of those southern, of that southern line. The, the raw truth about traffic on Dollar Generals is this is not a major destination retail. We're not generating tons of trips. ITE sets this trip, PM peak hour trips at 39, which means we have 19 vehicles because one trip entering and exiting is, is a trip. So you, one vehicle makes two trips every time it arrives at the site. So you're not talking about a huge turnover and that's a PM number. We have to go through the KDOT drive access permit process if, if the commission chooses to continue with the zoning, which will detail out impact to the highway, what those traffic patterns look like and what our impact is on those patterns. There is a very, very rigid KDOT access management manual that we have to adhere to and we have to get a permit before we're allowed to even cut the drive to come in. In the, there are lots of things that we can do to try to mitigate the impact of a commercial development coming in. One of them was the request of the zoning that's in front of you is C1 instead of C2, which is a more intense zoning that is what all the commercial property south of this tractor zone. Being cognizant of C1 is a neighborhood zoning designation, which is intentionally to be used for neighborhood goods and services and the availability of those services. The, the fact of the matter is, is there's not a lot of available commercial real estate on the north side of town to develop. We, we looked and this isn't the first tract that we tried to find and fit on and trust me, if we, if we could find one that fit, that worked, we'd much rather be discussing how we're building on an existing commercially zoned tract. But that's not the reality that we find ourselves in on the, in this location. We would respectfully ask that some of this information wasn't available to the planning commission and that's, I'll take personal responsibility of that, that we weren't in the room, we were hoping for a continuance and didn't get that. That's my fault, I should have been here. They totally acted within their purview and that's, that's, that's what it is, but a lot of these concerns, we really can help with engineering. There's engineered solutions that can help mitigate them. And that's the things that we really, we would like to focus on and, and how can we make it more compatible to the neighborhood? That's the goal. It's, it's not a matter of a yes or no, it's, hey, is there things that we can do that, that make it more palatable, that make it more, more tolerable? And I think there are and we've, we've kind of brought those, but we are more than willing to listen. This isn't a take it or leave it thing with us. We're, we're willing to try to fit, to make it work and, and that's, that's really what we're asking is give us the opportunity to, to do that so that we can try to, try to make it work and make it fit and, and appeal to our neighbors at the same time.
All right, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a procedural question, if you don't mind. These qualifications that we are to select from, the qualifying statements that we are to select from on this particular motion that's called, that's labeled to deny, do we need to go through these individually and define them or what's, well, never mind. It seems like that that would be premature at this point.
The reason the Planning and Zoning Board denied it has not been included in the information we received and that's what the characteristics that were outlined is in the example under to deny rezoning gives the reason why action is either approved or, or disapproved. There's some questions with the C1, limits the building size to 9,000 square feet, but the proposed structure is 9,000.
It, it's five, five thousand feet.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Yeah, the size is limited to 5,000 and the actual building will be 9,000, which will require the PUD, commercial PUD to be granted. So, you know, there is some, some issues of how the Planning and Zoning Board will look at the commercial PUD, even if it was granted to be rezoned. To C1, I think it still has the consideration of the PUD. I believe that was one of the reasons that it was requested to be tabled. Is that correct?
Yes, to get that information together because they weren't aware that, of that requirement in the district regulations. So by the time they discovered it, it was too late to meet the publication requirements to have it at the same hearing.
So is it, is it premature that we're to rule on, on C1 tonight without?
If the C1 was approved, they would still have to work out the PUD or the, or a variance, there's two different ways to look at it.
Okay.
Issue or submit zoning for a different designation that didn't have the square footage requirement such as the C2. that didn't have the square footage requirement such as the C-two, which is what the property further south is zoned. So those are kind of the three options to, to deal with that issue.
So we're, we're not, we're not missing a step here. What, what, what you've given us here before, um, overstepping or, um, missing a step between planning and zoning and the commission is what you're saying. We, what the recommendations that you've given before us here, we can act on any of these, is it?
Any, yes, any of these, but that's, that's not the end of what they would have to do because of this five thousand square foot issue. They still would have to come back and do additional things.
Because they exceed, exceed the, the five thousand foot, square foot limit.
And that's why they had previously asked for it to all be considered at one time and, and to be delayed.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen, we have, uh, three possible motions here. What, what would you consider?
I think the, the concerns of the citizens in the neighborhood, both pro and con, are important to consider. Also, the, the land use, whether the use of the property is compatible, that's being presented with the residential area. So, you know, the... With the planning and zoning's denial, are we to assume that it's their opinion that this is not compatible with the comp plan, since there was no description given of the action or?
I would hate to presume what their assumptions are without hearing that directly from them.
Is there anyone here this evening from Planning and Zoning that can speak to that?
I don't see anyone.
Sorry?
And it was a five to two vote.
I guess, you know, is this something we should return to the Planning and Zoning Board to give us more information on their, on their reason, on their action? And then re, revisit or visit the PUD at the same time? You know, throwing that out there for discussion, commissioners.
At, at this point in time, I feel fairly unsure how I would complete, uh, any of these, uh, motions other than that one, because I do not understand these qualification statements thoroughly. So if we want to go through and define each of the qualification statements to my satisfaction so that I know that I'm making the correct motion, we can do that. Or we can let the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission do that for us so that we'll know what we're voting on. I could, I could see myself moving to return this to zoning, planning and zoning.
You know, if we're going to use the Planning and Zoning Board as our advisor, we should have the information, uh, from them on what made their decision. We can look and go through the examples and render our opinion, too, if we want to discuss each option and, and make a determination based upon our understanding. But it's not going to be a reflection of the Planning and Zoning Board.
So in summary, we're basically missing some information as, as, as to how this was handled uh, between the developer and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, there's some information that should have been made available. Uh, maybe a misstep there. That would have given us more information. Uh, the developer feels like they didn't get a chance to present everything they wanted to present. Uh, the Plannings and, and Zoning Commission didn't give us enough information as to, to make a determination as why. Um, they voted as the way they did, even, even though it was a split vote of five to two. So maybe at this point, maybe, um, maybe presumptuous here, but maybe my fellow commissioners, uh, were looking at feeling more comfortable into returning the rezoning for further consideration and making their steps, sending it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I would make that motion.
And then letting them, um, give us the information, give the developer the chance to complete their presentation that they wanted to give, because they weren't expecting that to happen at that particular moment. So maybe that's the direction we need to go to keep everything, uh, legal and on the up and up. And then we will revisit this once that information has become available. So then I'm asking for a motion. Yes?
When you make the motion to return it, you're supposed to state, uh, the reason for doing so.
I'm sorry, Jeff. I didn't understand what you said.
When you, if you don't approve or deny today and you remand it basically to the planning commission?
Yeah.
You're supposed to give the planning commission some idea of why, why you're doing that.
So like the reason would be for clarification of their action?
Or, or what their basis was for their action.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that would be sufficient, just that.
The, the bottom line is this is a land use, uh, question, and I don't, I don't really understand what the, the land use problem, I guess, was that they were confronted with. I guess. I would like to know what that is.
With the ones listed, there's quite a range from character of the neighborhood, you know, zoning and use of properties, suitability of subject property for the use. It's restricted intent to the purpose. Use will be detrimental effect. So there, there are quite a variety that would help us know how, how they're thinking. Mayor, did you say you're ready for a motion?
I think I am ready for a motion.
Okay. I move to return the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny request to rezone attractive land from R-one Large Family, Single Family Dwelling District to C-one Neighborhood Business District at twenty-three thirteen North Pennsylvania Avenue for further consideration for regarding clarification of their action taken.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you for everyone that presented their comments on this tonight. And, um, I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
There is a meeting the first Tuesday in February, but I have not received, we've not got all the information on the PUD portion. So, um, if they're wanting all that considered at one time, we may need to delay that to the March meeting.
Okay.
So I'll get with the applicant and see what they prefer, if that's okay with you.
That would be fine.
And that's the, when I'm talking about the February and the March meeting, I'm talking about the P and Z, because I only meet monthly.
Right.
The first Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, make sure there's adequate time to where all these, uh, issues can be addressed and that we can get complete information to make the determination.
Okay. I will get with them and see what they prefer, if they want to submit the PUD and do it all at one time, or if they just want to go with this to start.
The public will be allowed to attend the meeting?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And they will be allowed for questions or comments during that? Okay.
Jeff? Anything else?
There won't be a public hearing per se.
Right.
Subject to rules that you have.
If, if they can sit in attendance to the meeting, there's no comments, but they can listen to the meeting.
But it's, it's not like the first meeting was a public hearing where you could come up, and there was no time on that really.
Okay.
But when you have your city commission meetings, this, this is not a public hearing, but it's open to the public and you have the three minute rules.
Right.
That would be the, what the next meeting will be too.
Okay.
Notices won't be sent out for this. It'll just be a typical commission, or Planning and Zoning Board meeting that...
Actually, it will be a public hearing on that.
Just basically they're going back to the public hearing. It's kind of like a continuance, wouldn't you think? No?
But you have a new application, and the new application, it will be the public hearing.
If, if we have a new application for the PUD, yes, that would be a, but not for the rezoning.
Okay. So the public, uh, will be able to make comments at that, at that time.
And I, I think staff will probably collect all the comments approved, the made, and provide them to the planning commission, like they've done here.
All right. That would be good. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Kelly.
All right, um, moving along.
Uh, item C, consider adopting ordinance forty-three forty-eight, creating the Independence Land Bank pursuant to KSA twelve dash fifty-nine oh one. April, how are you this evening?
I'm good. Thank you very much. Um, I'm just back. I, you all asked for a budget. I provided you with a budget outline.
Yes.
I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have. And once again, we're asking you to consider the land bank ordinance.
Kelly, is that budget information on this, on this slide?
Uh, no, I don't have that on there.
I have a copy of it. I don't have three, but I do have one.
Let me help.
I've got one.
I have it. No, thank you.
Okay, April, go ahead.
This is hard to give you a budget because visiting with the various communities that already have one in existence, it's in your control. It's in the land bank's control. Um, you take in as many properties as you can manage, and there's ebb and flow. You will have properties that come in, and you'll have properties go out annually. So what I did was I kind of took, um, and a lot of the communities, they don't have a budget. It's in their general. Um, I did visit with Pittsburgh. They were much more structured. And visiting with them, I took their numbers and tried to extrapolate. They will use it differently than what we do. They're very aggressive in the sense that they go to the tax sale and purchase their properties through the tax sale. That's not our intent. We're going to be a lot more like the other communities where it's mainly by donation. So Pittsburgh spends the majority of their funds. Um, I kind of extrapolated from what information they provided me. Ninety to ninety-five percent of their income is from land sale. Now, they've only been in existence since twenty sixteen. And their first two years, they, I think their first year, of course, there was no income. The second year, there was maybe two hundred. So, um, but their first year, there was twenty thousand dollars in expenses and sixteen thousand dollars in the second year. The majority of their, um, expenses are from mowing. They have probably about sixty to sixty-five percent of their annual budget is from mowing. The other large percentage that they spend, they do buy land, they do buy commercial buildings. Um, so they have expenses there. They also, once, because they go through the tax sale, they have, um, a process where they're cleaning a lot of the properties so that they can get clear title. And that requires, um, and Jeff can express, explain that probably better than I can, but it does require attorney fees. It requires publications in the paper. And so there's, uh, what, Jeff, what did you tell me? Maybe a thousand or so? Maybe depending on the extension of the work.
I think what you're talking about is if you buy some land and you, you know, you, you have a title company do a title search, and they tell you you don't have clear title, you can do what's called a, it's a lawsuit called a quiet title action. And depending on what the issue is, that can be, you know, five hundred to a thousand or fifteen hundred to two thousand. But I don't think the board of the, our, the land bank, if at least if I was advising them, would buy properties or, or acquire properties where they know there's a title problem, unless they know there's a buyer out there, they can recoup the money somehow.
Right. And that's, again, like I said, it's across the board. I'm not envisioning that. That's not our intent. Our, our intent or the way I'm envisioning is, as we've discussed before, we will go and look at a lot of these properties that are, the city's mowing on a regular basis. Can we take in that vacant lot and get it to a neighbor? Um, are we able to take some of those homes that we have absentee property owners that aren't hitting that threshold for demolition yet, but could possibly be saved? Um, for, I actually was on the phone yesterday with a gentleman who, um, is looking to buy some investment property here in town, and he has a strong interest in purchasing some homes through a land bank to, in essence, come in and rehab and flip. So that's really what I'm envisioning. Um, that's what the housing authority is envisioning. As we've shared, we also have that interest in coming in and, and rehabbing some homes and, and selling them to a, a low-income family.
So I guess maybe some of my confusion, it just came up as, as we're, as you were talking and the budget and everything. Are you proposing this to be a housing authority-operated land bank or a city-operated?
It has to be a city Independence Land Bank. It has to have its own independent board. It has to be ran independently. And that board will have to be appointed by the city commission, and they will function underneath the city commission. What I'm saying is the housing authority has an interest in getting this going. We think this is one of our tools that we're missing to preserve our housing stock. What the housing authority is willing to do is provide admin through us and putting in fifty thousand dollars to start it. Now, at the end of that fifty thousand dollars, will the housing authority put additional funds in if we need it? As of today, yes. I mean, that's their intent. But, you know, it could change. It could be something that the city commission at some point in time in the future decides that they don't want the housing authority to provide admin for it.
April, at seventy-five hundred dollars, at the seventy-five hundred dollar a year level of expenditures, your fifty thousand dollars then will, um, last for an excess of six years.
Correct, and that's without income.
And that's without income?
Right.
Ah.
There's no projection. I mean, this is just first year. This is what I'd, a projection of, of selling properties and, and that.
So with no income, with all just pass-through properties, your funding would last for six years plus at a seventy-five hundred dollar a year out, out, um, cost?
That is, there's also a caveat there that working with the city, because it is an Independence Land Bank, a city land bank, the city is looking at changing up their mowing, and that's one of the largest expenses. If this is something that the, the city is already mowing and you're charging a hundred dollars an hour or, or whatever, you could continue to mow, and that's going to save on those funds. And we're hoping that we are flipping that property quickly. You know, a lot of that intent is we, we wouldn't necessarily be taking property in until we kind of know we've got a place for it to go. We're not just taking property in for it to be sitting there to own the property. That's not the intent.
Right.
We would do a lot of homework on the front end before we would take in a property.
And what you, when you're saying we, you're talking about the land bank board, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that, that was what, I was confused when you were talking about we. I was seeing the housing authority and the...
I'm sorry.
Fifty, no, it's, it wasn't your, your fault. It was just perception. Um, but as it is organized and it becomes a city function, then the fifty thousand dollars is given to the city. It becomes city funds.
Let's, let's clarify that, because that's not right. This would be like the housing authority or the library board. It can only be a, the only way it's, can be created is by the city commission. That's state law. But you appoint a seven-person board. And if there are vacancies on the board, you appoint and fill the vacancies, just like, okay. Then the board that you've appointed runs a day-to-day with no oversight from the city. Then the board that you've appointed runs day-to-day with no oversight from the city.
So it's, it's independent from
Yes.
housing and city, just like
That's correct.
your example of the library board, it clarifies.
It does have to, this is per the statute, if, the proposed ordinance in section eight talks about the budget.
Right.
But everything in here is right out of the state statute.
Yeah.
There, the budget has to be submitted to and approved by the city commission.
And it has to have an independent audit at the end of the year?
It's included, yeah, included in the city's audit.
Right.
Um, the safeguards and April's rights, you know, you look for donated property.
Right.
I've got an estate right now. We got a vacant lot on South Eighteenth Street. The taxes are forty-five dollars a year. We tried to give it to one of the heirs. They didn't want the mowing responsibility.
Yeah.
I was hoping this would get enacted quicker. I offered to the land bank, but, you know, this addresses the blighting issues that come up, the infill issues in residential and commercial. I mean, you got some downtown buildings, hopefully not too many, uh, because there's been a good move on that, really. But it could, if that ever popped up, if a, uh, property owner downtown died and the building went vacant and the heirs didn't step up to do anything, you know, if it goes to the tax sale or somehow it's donated, I mean, that could be addressed, too. But what happens is, once they get title, any back taxes on it are wiped out.
Right.
And so that is keeping a lot of people from going after these other properties that exist now because they don't want to assume the responsibility for the back taxes.
Right.
So, anyway, I've said too much.
No, that's, the, the organization, you know, we've been talking. It was getting a little clouded between city and, and housing authority, and, but this will be just a total separate entity that operates. The money will go into a, a separate fund for land bank. So it's not housing authority money anymore. It's not city money, but it's housing, it's a land bank. You know, and that, that clarifies, the only, you know, the only thing, initially, I think residential property is good. Commercial property, I think you open up a door for long-term holding on to it, and then you've got additional expenses of maintenance, keeping it watertight. Most of the commercial buildings, when, uh, somebody's going to give them to you, they're major, and then they're not going to turn. So, you know, I, I could see, starting with residential and see how it goes, get your feet wet, you know. We get our feet wet with it, and, uh, maybe at a later day reconsider commercial, but
Again, you're going to have control over that, so, you know, I, again, I've expressed that before. I, I hate to take something out that is a potential tool, that we don't know what opportunity may benefit the city to do so, to have it in place. Um, I will tell you, Pittsburgh did take two commercial buildings in, and that was probably two of their most, um, prosperous and beneficial projects that they did. Uh, again, that's not our intent or my vision at the moment, but I just, I hate to limit ourselves to a tool that could be there.
Independence doesn't have the economic base that Pittsburgh does.
There was a example this year that didn't come to pass, but the building at two oh one East Main. Had this land bank been in existence, uh, and had we been able to locate the owner, and he would have signed the deed to void the tax liability. We had a person that was willing to take ownership of that. The taxes would have been wiped out if it went through the land bank, and this person had to wherewithal to do the demolition and save the city that cost. That would have been a good use, but it's not going to happen because, you know, the land bank wasn't in existence. We, we can't get the owner to respond to us
Right.
for a lot of reasons, but I, I like her. I wouldn't rule out commercial. You've got to have a seven-person board. They're not, they're, they're going to have the same thoughts you do. They're not going to take on a property that's where the maintenance, uh, exceeds what they might flip it for, so. That's up to you, though.
It's like any other board, they would consider the, the, whether that would be an asset or be a liability, and they would discuss that and determine whether they would want to take that on or not, but
I don't think they'll be taking on building D.
And so what we're also offering the housing authority is that admin process.
Secretary, clerical.
Clerical and all that.
Right, mm-hmm, and the reporting end and, and all of that, absolutely.
Okay, great.
And, and hustling, trying to, you know, get out and, and methodically look. Like I said, our intent, if this goes through, I've already visited with staff, um, the intent of taking, starting off simply with our list that we mow and seeing if we can't look at that to get those into two good, responsible property owners' hands. That's our number-one agenda. And then looking at housing.
All right, sounds like a good plan, April. Uh, any other questions?
I don't have any questions. Uh, I have reviewed the document that, uh, describes the ordinance. It does look like a good tool for, uh, use in, uh, in helping out the, uh, the housing stock and taking care of some of the blight in the community. It seems like a tool that would be a very, a very good use to the city of Independence.
All right, thank you, April.
Sure.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance four-three, four-eight, establishing the Independence Land Bank.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Uh, item D, consider authorizing a contract amendment with Trans Systems to add the design and inspection of the second and Locust and Westminster Street sewer projects to the contract approved on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one for the First and Birch Street Sewer Project. Yes?
Good evening. Um, yes, uh, at the last meeting, uh, the initial contract was signed or was approved for Trans Systems to do the design near the First and Birch area, and we, uh, there was a request to expand that to the Second and Locust and Westminster Street Sewer Projects. And we've got the technical information as well as, uh, a proposed amendment agreement.
John, on that, uh, the initial agreement was for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and by adding this additional project to that is an additional cost of seventy-nine thousand dollars, which makes that, if my math is right?
Actually, thi- this one is, uh, an add of ninety-eight thousand, uh, for, for both of the areas, so it takes the total to two hundred and one thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's an addition of how much?
Ninety-eight thousand.
It says seventy-nine thousand. Did I?
That, that was an error.
Do I?
That, that was an error from an earlier draft. That's my fault.
Okay.
So is it, it is ninety-eight thousand?
It is ninety-eight thousand.
And that's added to
The initial
adjusting bid was?
The initial was a hundred and three thousand.
A hundred and three thousand, okay. That's where my numbers were off. I was thinking it was initially a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
And actually, you're a hundred percent correct that that is the case. Um, and let me pull that one up. Um, yeah, uh, I'm sorry. The ninety-eight thousand is the combined total for design, and the hundred and three thousand is for inspection. So the original hundred and twenty-two thousand was for the design and inspection of the first section, so. So the numbers are in there. They're just, they, uh, the design is with the design and the inspection's with the inspection.
Okay, so two hundred and one thousand is what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that.
So now I'm all confused.
The, the original, and, and, and that's, uh, the original contract was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and that included both design and inspection. This, uh, contract amendment is for seventy-nine thousand dollars, and it also includes design and inspection. The amendment agreement, um, has the revised contract total of ninety-eight thousand for design and a hundred and three for inspection across both projects. So you have the inspection for both, the first project and the second project combined in the, uh, a hundred and three thousand dollars for the inspection.
So the total for the project with the amendment?
Is two hundred and one thousand.
Is two hundred and one thousand?
Yes.
With design and inspection?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the seventy-nine thousand dollars, as noted on the, uh, request for commission action, i- is actually correct. So I was incorrect about saying I was incorrect. Uh, the, the numbers are correct.
I think the most important part is the bottom line.
Yes.
How we get there, it's going to be two hundred and one thousand total for all three projects.
Yes, and actually, uh, in the amendment agreement, which was part of the packet, it does break out the initial, uh, design and inspection for the first projects, too, so it, it's, it's actually all in there.
All right, gentlemen, any, any further questions?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, um, then do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract amendment with Trans Systems to add the design and inspection of the second and Locust and Westminster Sewer Projects. Did, is there a, yeah, that was my motion.
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. John, thank you.
Was there a schedule given to us? Did I see that back in reports or something?
Um, there is a report.
What's the schedule for getting this?
The, the survey is actually going to begin tomorrow on, on all of these projects. So we really need to get that, that topographic data to determine, you know, final plan. We've estimated kind of a worst-case scenario for construction, but we're hopeful we'll come up with some more economic solutions.
So we're ready to go to bid, are we looking at, at, uh, April? Are we looking at May? Are we looking at August?
We'll have to get KDHE approval. Um, so I'd say May is, is actually more accurate. It takes, take a little bit of time to get that approval.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, uh, moving along. Item E, consider authorizing the development of mechanical codes.
Mayor?
David?
Commissioner, last meeting, asked me to bring back kind of an outline of what we would do, and I provided that to you in the packet. And, uh, our plan is to get the mechanical people together, uh, local, surrounding areas, Coffeyville, Deering, Independence. Bring them together along with some other interested parties and work to see if we can come to an agreement to develop a mechanical code and at the same time keep you guys comprised and see if we can come to a consensus or not and see what we can develop. I don't know if you guys have any particular questions, uh, Leonard?
On the boards, do we limit it to those that have a business in Independence, or is it open to, like, plumbers, electricians that are in the surrounding?
They just have to be licensed by the city on the other boards. Electricians and plumbers have to be licensed in the city to do work in the city.
So you could have a Coffeyville
Yes.
electrician, okay.
And we've had some of that, I think.
Yeah, in fact, we
We've got some from Cherryville on there.
Yeah, one of our members now is from Cherryville. Uh, I think Travis lives up actually north of town, so, on the electrical board.
That would really be beneficial in looking at, uh, HVAC contractors to take the whole, uh, region that
Yep.
is going to be licensed. That'll be a little different since we don't have licensing.
Well, we have business licenses, and they should have a business license, so we would have that.
Right, but not as much as a licensed electrician. That's all mandated
Right, yeah.
already where we're kind of going in good.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we could benefit by getting, uh, in this, going into a new area, having tradesmen from a broader area. Chanute or Parsons, Coffeyville, if they're doing trade here.
Yep.
It'd really help us. Okay, great.
All right, any other further questions?
I have none.
All right, uh, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize city staff to develop mechanical codes for commission consideration.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, item F, consider adopting a resolution declaring the necessity for street improvements and authorizing a survey.
Uh, Mayor, I think, this is an item, I think, Jeff, do you want to kind of lead of what we're doing, or?
Yeah, this is on your, uh, West Main project, two hundred, three hundred block, street improvements. There's one property where it's, there's been difficulty in getting the owner to respond, and KDOT has some time constraints. And Sean said, you know, we need to, we have to have an eminent domain case on file with a hearing date by March five to meet KDOT requirements. Unfortunately, eminent domain is when you have to condemn a property. In this case, we're really only after a temporary construction easement. That part is fairly painless. The other part of it is, uh, condemning the south driveway entrance to the property. That, that's going to be eliminated. It's over my head why, but it has to do with ADA requirements. So the first step on a condemnation is the adoption of the resolution that you have in front of you, two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero two. And it, it simply identifies the property, authorizes the survey. Survey's actually been done, but this has to occur. The resolution has to be published, and then we come back with, to you with an ordinance which is more specific. And it will be asking Kelly to get with the mayor and you to maybe do a five, or five-minute telephone meeting, special meeting next week at your convenience, just so we can get the ordinance adopted, so it can be published, and then we can file the eminent domain case. That's all. Any questions? I mean, Sean's here to explain the necessity of the driveway, if you have questions about that.
John?
I'm sorry.
John and David and I, uh, met with, uh, all of the landowners. There's a total of six landowners. All of them are temporary easements. They're all very understanding and supportive of the project. This landowner's just been non-responsive. And, uh, to meet the bid date, you, we have to bid the project in June, or you actually potentially could lose that grant. It is a federal, tied to federal money, and we have to bid it in June. And KDOT has given us the direction that we passed on to Jeff about having to hit certain dates through the condemnation process. Eventually, there is a form that the city has to sign that says we've obtained all the right-of-way and to meet all those requirements. That's what it is. The south end of O'Reilly's, um, to, to get an ADA-compliant sidewalk across there, we have to have a cross slope with a maximum of two percent. And it's probably twelve now with that entrance in there, and there's just not enough room to get an ADA-compliant compliant sidewalk and have a useful entrance into the property, so we didn't want to eliminate it, but there's just no way to accommodate it, so.
So the new work will eliminate that south entrance?
Correct.
And with the right of eminent domain, are we having to purchase, we're going to have to replace that retaining wall, aren't we?
Yeah, the, yes, the, the, there will be a little bit of work on the property itself, and we'll replace that retaining wall, but we will not retain right-of-way. It, it'll all be, go back to the property. That's why it's a temporary, temporary easement.
So in this, we're not like having to purchase property. We can take the wall out and put it back, and it would still remain their property. We're not going to have to change hands with money, are we? with money, are we?
That's correct, although we're not taking- The area where the driveway is, we're altering it, and that actually constitutes a type of a taking that they're entitled to compensation for, but there is another driveway entrance.
Right.
I mean, that'll be the big squawk is, you know, they're losing one driveway, and the process is, three appraisers are appointed, they come up with a value, whatever that value is, the city pays it into court, and they can either appeal it or not, or appeal it and they could accept it.
This would be the value of, of that drive, trying to assess a property-
Yes.
On that one entrance?
Losing, losing a driveway, the, the, the technical jargon is, uh, the appraisers are to look at the value of the property immediately before the taking, and then after the taking, so whatever the difference is would be what the city would owe them.
On, on the vacant building, does it have a, a value, or is there anything with that change of use that would, would mean that the city could require that entrance to be closed?
You know, I had that conversation with Sean about access management, but it's not on Highway seventy-five, so.
But is it within our ordinances, uh, with the change?
That, that I don't know, um, if it were on Highway seventy-five, it fits into that access management ordinance, but I'm not sure how, how it would, what you have on the books to address.
I did review the drawings that were included in the access management plan the other day, and it does not include that area.
No, it's only on seventy-five, but, you, you know, if a, a building that has non-compliant drives closes and for it to reopen, can the city then require that drive anywhere that's not on, uh, 'cause the location of the drive, it presents a problem there with pedestrian vehicular traffic crossing the driveway, sightline, uh, coming and going that-
I don't know what ordinance it would be that conflicts with unless it's somewhere in the zoning code.
Yeah.
It's something we can, we have time to look at.
Yeah.
That would affect the, the compensation issue, obviously.
Right, and, and the value of that-
Yeah.
That drive too, because it's not conducive to the downtown to have that drive.
I agree with everything you said.
Yeah.
It's a, you know, if that, that drive wasn't there now and a company came in, would we let them put it in there? Probably not.
No.
So, basically, there'll be some compensation for the elimination of the driveway, the costs that we incur for rebuilding that wall?
Now, that'd be part of the project cost.
Okay, so would, would they take that into consideration of the investment that we made to rebuild that?
No.
And this, that would be separate from what?
Yeah, you're gonna pay for that.
Would not take, okay.
They strictly look at value before, value after.
Value after.
Pay the difference.
Okay.
And the, the complicating factor would be if, because they've abandoned use of the building, if we have a city ordinance, we can hang our hat on to say that, that driveway's gotta go anyway, we don't owe you any compensation for it, but I've, I'm not aware of that ordinance, so I'm not sure one exists, so.
Okay.
But I will look.
All right, good. Maybe there is one and we can avoid that additional expense. All right, um, and let's see, there's two parts to this, one is to adopt a resolution, and one is to schedule a special commission meeting. Um, should we go first with adopting the resolution, and then we'll talk about date and time? So I need a, I need a motion.
I move to adopt resolution, twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, and I have a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we need to set a date and a time for a special commission meeting to establish and pass an ordinance that pertains to, that ties to the resolution that we just, uh, agreed to adopt.
When will the resolution be ready?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be published- Tomorrow, according to Dave, I think.
The resolution, yes, that you just passed.
I can't hear you.
The resolution that you just passed, it'll be in the paper tomorrow.
Okay.
So the meeting can be anytime, starting Monday or after, but the sooner the better, right?
Oh, yes. You were just talking about five minutes, five or ten minutes.
It'll be a quick one.
Okay. Um, gentlemen, are you good for Monday?
I am.
I am.
Monday at nine?
Nine o'clock? And we'll, we'll meet here at nine?
That date is February the first?
Yes.
Nine AM?
Okay, so do I have a motion for that?
I move to schedule a special commission meeting for February first at nine AM.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Uh, item G, consider bids received for power factor correction for building D. John?
Yes, uh, we, uh- Asked for several bids and, um, to correct power factor, and we received four, actually we received three bids with, one had two options with it. Uh, the lowest apparent bidder is Simco, um, we did ask them a couple of clarifying questions, uh, they, they did clarify and say that there was absolutely no, uh, nothing that the city needed to provide except for access to the site, uh, we would not need to provide any sort of electrical assistance or anything else. Uh, additionally, um, they did specify that given the loads that we have and the size of the project, that Harmonix were of no concern. So, uh, we do have an email from them on that, so they have verified that, um, there are no additional costs, and they, uh, indicated this is a relatively simple project of this type.
All right, and that is, we are looking at a bid of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, for the hundred and twenty-five K var, okay?
Yes.
Approach number one, all right. And there is a five-year warranty on the capacitors? Okay, I see that. Okay, and then they are projecting an annual, estimated annual savings, seven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is a payback in two point oh six years. Okay, and Eaton's a good corporation, they make good, good equipment. Gentlemen, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move to au- authorize the mayor to sign an agreement prepared by the city attorney for the power factor correction for building D with Simco for approach number one in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, uh, we're now down to reports, we have an update from Trans Systems. Sean?
Thank you. The first project is Maple Street, uh, I believe the city had received their grant, their, uh, agreement from KDOT, and it's been, um, approved. The schedule, uh, in that agreement is for the project to bid within six months of July, so we've been shooting for August as a bid date, so the schedule and, and the update we provided kinda lays out having preliminary plans completed in March, and then sixty percent plans in May, and final plans in July, uh, with this type of, of, uh, it, it's strange when you get into the different types of KDOT funding where the one that Jeff is dealing with now is a very rigid and detailed type of program, this one is all state money, so it's a lot easier, easier to deal with, and it's not on a state highway either, so, so that, that, there will be some easement acquisition and some other things, but it's a much easier process, uh, on, on that project, even though it's, it is a KDOT grant also. So, so we should hit the, uh, August date, we've had preliminary meetings with, uh, some of the utilities, uh, trying to, uh, do the design best we can to minimize any utility relocations, but also, you know, meet, meet the city's needs as well, so when we have preliminary plans in March, we'll present those, discuss with the city staff, and then present them to the commissions.
The rail crossing is abandoned, isn't it?
Um, there's, there's two rail crossings, um, I, I think they're both live, I think they're both live.
There's one farther, uh, farther west.
There, yeah, there, there may be an abandoned one that I'm just not recalling, but-
Yeah.
It's abandoned, isn't it?
Yes.
So, yeah, we'll be, the abandoned one plus two live ones, we will be, uh, doing improvements across those, so. We don't plan on modifying the, any of the, uh, signals, but, but, uh-
Okay.
As far as the surface itself, we will be improving that.
Will the, uh, the crossing have to be modified by the rail line, the active lines, or we'll just come right up to their right-of-way?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come right up to their right-of-way, and then if, if there needs to be grade changes, we'll coordinate that with them, but we don't anticipate having, having to do any of those improvements. On the main, eighth to tenth, uh, you know, with the, with the easement acquisition, you know where we stand on that, the sixty percent plans have been turned in, which is on schedule to meet that June bid date, which we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure we meet that, so it doesn't jeopardize any funding. Uh, the city's advertised for engineers for inspection on that project, and that, we don't, we don't have a, a contract for inspection, it's just for design, and then that will allow grant funds, if there are enough in the budget, to be used for inspection as well. On the, uh, KDHE, CDBG, uh, loan and grant, the, the KDHE loan's still in progress, they occasionally ask for different things, we, they asked for our capital improvement plan, which Lacey provided, so we should be getting an agreement. Um, I have not heard on the CDBG award, Kelly, have you heard anything on?
I've heard we're gonna hear public free roads.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll find out, uh, on the CDBG grant. And then it lists the projects, including the ones that we've just amended the contract for, I, uh, that should fall into line nicely with being able to use KDHE funds for these. The, the ones we're, we're discussing lately at First and Birch, Second Locust, Westminster, those would not apply, those could not be used, uh, with the CDBG grant, but they, we can use loan, loan money for those projects, if, if, if you do receive a CDBG grant. Uh, West Main and, and Peter Pan, um, the start date on that one was delayed last fall just due to weather, um, that, that is the first project on the, uh, contractor's list, Heckert Construction, so we expect in mid-March they will be in milling and, and beginning overlay. Typically, March fifteenth is when the asphalt plants are allowed to start by KDOT, uh, the weather's, uh, meets the, uh, temperature requirements for KDOT. Whiskey Creek, the city did not receive the EDA grant for the work near Twentieth and Sycamore, uh, the clearing work for phase one is complete, I believe, and then phase two's underway. On the ADA, uh, Graham Construction completed the original scope of work, there was a potential change order discussed at previous meetings, uh, Graham has requested that instead of a change order, we do a separate contract, and it's just a matter of, his contract has been so long now, it's, it's causing him issues with bonding to continue that length of a contract, so we've prepared a contract for that amount and sent it to Graham, we don't have that signed back yet, but hopefully by the next, next commission meeting, we'll have that. I think that's all we, I have on these, if you all have any questions or comments.
I had a chance to look at that first, at phase one of the clearing on Whiskey Creek, and it looks like they took a lot of, uh, a lot of trees out, and they've really cleared, did a good job clearing that out, uh, it looks completely different, but there was a lot of brush and tree and undergrowth there, and-
Yeah, I think it, I think it will help, I think it will help with conveyance during some larger events, so, definitely.
Looks like they did a good job. All right, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the city board minutes, any questions concerning the economic development advisory board minutes, or the electrical board minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
All right, moving along, uh, city manager comments, Kelly?
Yes, um, I did send out the twenty twenty-one intention statements and creative pathways from our retreat last week, and I thought that was very successful, uh, we plan to include the results in the next newsletter so that we're communicating that with the public. Uh, the status of the Central Park, North Park Boulevard Sports Complex, um, had a conference call with Doug Pickert this week, and we're, uh, have a meeting with the subcommittee tomorrow, uh, to discuss next steps, and we will get back with you on that, we're trying to put together a plan for that project with members of the rec commission involved. On February tenth, uh, city hall will be closed for training, uh, we have someone here that is going to provide training on N-code and some different modules, and, and in order for staff to, uh, engage with that, they need to be able to concentrate and not have interruptions, so, uh, wanted to let you know about that. Um, I'll let David give a report on the vaccinations.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Rick Witson contacted me yesterday, and all of the healthcare facilities in Montgomery County got together and are going to be working together to ensure our communities are vaccinated, uh, preliminary, uh, they're encouraging people to contact their local physicians, uh, you also can contact the health department and sign up if you're in group two, which especially those sixty-five years and older, it'll also be reaching out to essential workers. Currently, they have about two hundred vaccinations, and we've agreed to offer, uh, the civic center on Wednesday, and they will be administering those two hundred vaccinations, I'm not for sure who the group is, I'm assuming it's probably people that have signed up that they'll be contacting, but he assures me as vaccination comes in that you will start to see a big ramp-up of those shots being available to the community, and, uh, just continue to encourage the citizens to pay attention, uh, our governor's looking at Walgreens, Walmarts, pharmacies, and other outlets to be able to give those vaccinations, uh, it's just a matter of ramping those programs up, so, uh, people should just pay attention, uh, we'll try to update things through social media, watch papers, uh, you can contact your health department or your physicians, so those vaccinations should be coming fairly quickly. Uh, emergency services, police, fire, EMS have all now received their second shot, or in the process in the next couple of days. Uh, I tell you, the second shot does give you a little bit, it'll, it'll knock you a little bit, but we made it through it, so, uh, we'll see how it goes. Uh, we, uh, have some essential workers in this group that will be working as far as in the city to get vaccinated too, so we'll be making contact with everybody and as those shots become available.
And then we also have, uh, the status of the Twenty-seventh Street, uh, closing their Quality Motors, David, can you let them know what's going on with that?
Yeah, uh, back in October, you know, we initially, Quality had thought about closing the street at Myrtle and Twenty-seventh, but due to unable to purchase the property, uh, it went back to their property line at the alley, uh, they're getting ready to proceed with their project, uh, so next Friday, uh, morning, we will be- So, next Friday morning, we will be closing that street there at the alley of Twenty-seventh. We'll be putting up the signage at Myrtle, saying not a through street and then dead end signs down there where the street closes. Then their project, they hope to have plans to us within the next month or so. So, you should, probably early spring, June, April, May, you might start to see that project really get kicked off out at Quality Motors.
Right, good.
And then I have a few more, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, we've got a lot of questions on the leaf pickup. They have had some mechanical issues with the leaver, the weather has kind of delayed them. They are in Area Twelve, north of Taylor, and as soon as the leaver gets repaired, then they'll get back on that. So, I wanted to let you know about that. We have opened the IT tech position that we had previously discussed and have some good news on property tax. The amount received was eighty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents more than the January 2020 payment and for a total of one million five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, one hundred and fif, one million five hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-nine cents. So, that's some good news. We were concerned about high delinquencies with COVID and, and so. David and Lacy, we're probably very happy to hear that as well. So, and then another thing is I have a meeting set with the representative of US Senator Roger Marshall next week and they're wanting to know how they can best serve the people of Independence. One of you would like to sit in on that, that, that would be fine, just let me know.
When is that?
It is February third at one thirty and it's a team's meeting. Just let me know and I can get you added to that or you can come to the office and, and be on that with, with me. If, if more than one wants to do it, then you'll need to determine which, so that we don't have an open meetings violation. But if you have any feedback or anything you want me to, to pass on, please let me know as well. And that's it.
Alright, we've already gone through all the public concerns, haven't we, Dave? Okay. Then, we're up to adjournment.
Commissioner comments.
Sorry. Did you have something?
Commissioner comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right through that. Commissioner comments, I'm sorry. Gentlemen?
Oh, I have one this evening, if you, if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead, Dave.
My comments this evening are an effort to complete some of the conversation, which was started at, at the January seventh special meeting called to discuss a cost analysis that I had been working on with regard to the Phase Two proposal for the 1916 City Hall renovation and construction of the fire and EMS facility on West Myrtle Street. On November the nineteenth of last year, about two months ago, the commission was presented with a Phase Two programming needs and an architectural solution valued at six point five seven million. You can find my comments and concerns from the November nineteenth meeting on the city's website or YouTube channel at the timestamp one hour and fifty-six minutes. On January the seventh, we met to review the costs associated with the Phase Two proposal. I shared the relevant costs I had identified and asked for input from the other commissioners to complete this cost analysis. The recording of this meeting is also available. Look for the special commission meeting from January the seventh of this year, beginning at about nine minutes. And if you have any questions, please contact me, I'd be glad to talk to you. Most projects do not include a cost analysis. Cost analysis is difficult and expensive to develop. Cost analysis is commonly used to differentiate between two or more scenarios from, from the same project. The January seventh analysis compares the two alternative scenarios. The first alternative is the implementation of the six point five million dollar Phase Two. The second scenario would be the no charge, or no change in our current cost level solution or scenario, which includes the temporary City Hall building. If you're like me, you were under the impression the current occupancy of the temporary City Hall building was very expensive. However, my initial cost analysis looked like the total cost of the city was not going to go down until after the repayment of a twenty-year bond. I asked the commissioners for cost elements they might have, which would help complete the cost analysis. The commissioners discussed a third scenario, which involved, pardon me, which involved remodeling the temporary City Hall to create a permanent City Hall location and an additional cost of three point three million dollars. By completing the Phase Two instead, we can avoid the remodeling project. This three point three million dollar future cost, project cost is one way to rationalize the Phase Two as cost effective. Cost avoidance of this kind is typically used when the cost is otherwise immediately, immediate and unavoidable. For me, the bottom line is, if we're going to be able to cut costs and lower taxes, it really has to be a reduction in current spending and current taxation levels. If it's cost effective, we'd be able to lower taxes. I'm a fiscal conservative, I'd like to lower taxes if I can. Our taxes are high enough and we should work hard to keep them from going higher. So, I want this project to lower our taxes if possible. After further thought, two important cost factors came to my mind, which I think the city needs to address. The first is debt structure. Rather than financing for twenty years, we should instead make the term of the bond more in line with the perceived useful life of the building. One expert told me we should expect a useful life of fifty years. Extending the bond to twenty-five or thirty years would reduce the annual cost and align with the longer useful life of the building. I think we should have a solution which will at least reduce total annual cost. The second factor has to do with lowering operating costs. Administrative space is, is expensive. It's an expensive investment with a high risk of obsolescence. The world is changing rapidly. Technology is changing our everyday lives. The impact of technology is happening throughout businesses and governments. Meeting rooms, boardrooms, conference rooms, classrooms and any space for gathering, gathering are at risk as people move away from meeting in person. Digital solutions, mobile workstations, working from home, web-based meetings and distance learning are disrupting traditional business models throughout the country. Gathering spaces are being reimagined as the pandemic has taught us the lessons of social distancing. Administrative space will soon be changing and we could be, and we could find our space obsolete and overbuilt. Knowing this is happening and proceeding to give the city administration half of the available space at the 1916 City Hall building seems short-sighted to me. Giving the city administration half of the available space at the 1916 City Hall building creates the need to build additional city structure elsewhere. This additional space will increase annual operating cost. If we're going to have a cost-effective solution, which has any chance of returning the city to a pre-Building D efficiency, what should we do? I believe we should expect the best and prepare for the worst, but I hear our population is declining. I hear our property values are declining and I'm concerned. The stately and majestic Memorial Hall is one of the grandest structures in our community. It's a testament to our city's heroes, but it stands underutilized most of the time. The five thousand square foot mezzanine level is unused and other rooms are rarely used. This thirty thousand square foot unused and underutilized space, which we pay to maintain already, could be the home of the administrative offices with the addition of an elevator and other improvements. City administration could use the hallways, the meeting rooms and the supporting facilities of Memorial Hall. We can preserve the Memorial Hall's usefulness, while most of the space would remain as always, as available as it always has been. This leaves the entirety of the 1916 City Hall available to create a public safety building, which would include police, fire and EMS. And we build what we are going to build in downtown Independence. Let's be smart about this investment. We can move out of the temporary space, we can reduce our operating costs, we can invest in downtown Independence and we can utilize what we already have. I'd like to see this alternative developed as soon as possible. I think it could save us a lot of money. One last consideration I wish to speak to is to, is the disposal of the temporary City Hall buil, building, yes. This is the riskiest part of the project, but it is also very hopeful. While I know very little about commercial real estate, I think the temporary City Hall building may very well be one of the best opportunities the city has in the immediate future for attracting a new business entity to our community. The building is ADA compliant, healthcare-friendly, well-maintained and ready to show. Successfully marketing the building is of extreme importance, as we need a marketing plan to be developed immediately. We need to move forward on the, on the sale of the building as soon as possible. If it sells quickly, that would be what my mentor used to call a good problem. Let's get Building D sold. In conclusion, I look forward to my next three years of service as city commissioner. I hope, with hope, as I believe the conditions seem right for Independence to thrive. I am hopeful for the future. This pandemic has strengthened my belief in the resiliency of our community. I hope you feel the same way and I hope you will continue to support Independence, Kansas in your neighborhoods, in your local businesses and your local charities. Independence is a great place to live, to work and to raise your family. I consider myself very fortunate to live here. I will continue to work hard to affect the changes in city government, which support, which support the growth and prosperity of the community of Independence, Kansas. Thank you very much. I respectfully request the commission discuss the next steps to develop the construction costs for this alternative Phase Two to utilize Memorial Hall and also to develop a marketing plan for the temporary City Hall building. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Koflish, do you have any comments?
Well, I guess we're going along the same lines. I had a note about starting to market Building D. And I think I've got some information that might identify the marketing company that contacted with the buyer, but I think we need to start looking at ways to market Building D. I can get that information to you, Kelly. Also, I wondered if you had heard from Vance on the information that he was going to send on the owner-architect agreement and the construction manager, the data for it?
I don't believe I've received that yet.
Okay. I had a, a call from Steve Ammasinger with the local American Legion and he wanted to invite all of us commissioners and city manager, city manager. They're having the American Legion Department of Kansas Midwinter Forum this Saturday here in a civic center. They have a continental breakfast that begins at seven AM and then the program begins at eight AM. And they requested us to attend. They're having representatives from the state and in the past, they've had national representatives of the Legion attend. So, he was requesting, if we're available, to be present. And he, he mentioned the mayor maybe welcoming or addressing, extending a welcome to the dignitaries that attend. So, I'm relaying that Saturday morning, seven o'clock, breakfast, eight o'clock, the program begins here. So, that's all I had.
Okay, I, I am available Saturday morning, so.
Since it's not related to city business, all of us can attend, correct?
Just have zero interactive communication about business with each other.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Koflish.
Thank you.
I don't have any comments at this time. We don't have any more public concerns, right, David? So, we're up to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Say it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.